Meeting called to order, please, Mr. Clerk.
I want to invite the music. Counselor Chow?
Here.
Counselor Dakota?
Here.
Counselor Scott?
Here.
Three present.
Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to the subcommittee meeting regarding rules and policy and election. Tonight's meeting will cover the different scenarios regarding filing of vacancies in elected bodies and also examples of code of conduct. I'd like to also acknowledge Counselor Rita Mercier and Counselor Vista Nguyen, who are also in the chamber. Before we start, I'm gonna open it to the public, if any member of the public who would like to speak, any member of the public who would like to speak. Before I turn it to make, ourselves make some comments, the meeting tonight again is to discuss the code of conduct and the scenarios regarding filling the vacancies in elected bodies. I think some members of public here, even though Solicitor One to the examples of code conduct go second, I'm going to take that up first because I believe there are people here in the chamber who would like to hear about this report. Before I turn to Counselor, I would like to thank the Solicitor who's here and Assistant Solicitor who's here to make a comment, report, and answer any questions we might have. I'm gonna turn to the Solicitor first. If you could open up the meeting and just give us briefly the outline of the examples of code of conducts that we're gonna be covering tonight. I thank you for the report, by the way, and thank you for emailing that to us in advance before the meeting. Mr. Solicitor?
Sure. Thank you. So, just to be clear, this code of conduct that's here, it's actually just one code of conduct. There aren't several different ones because we started to look through them and the Mass Municipal Association had a really good, sort of like their model recommendation for this sort of thing. So, we basically, we didn't take it verbatim, but we took it and we sort of spelled it out in front of you, applied it to law. As, you know, we tried to keep it simple with the sections. You know, this is something that would go in as an ordinance, you know, and it would apply to elected and appointed officials both. So, if there are any specific questions that you have as to what's contained in here, I'm happy to answer them. But again, the MMA had a really good model recommendation for this, that it's used in several other communities, so it kind of made sense to start here. And if you have any comments or questions, happy to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Solicitor. We start with Counselor Dakota.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. City Solicitor Williams, thank you in advance. I didn't get to read this till about an hour ago, but a couple of things did strike me and I'd like your opinion. Concerning code of conduct, letter M. Refrain from abusive conduct, personal charges, or verbal attacks upon the character or motives of other elected or appointed officials, staff, and/or public. If in fact that did happen, and I know this is a very touchy subject, but I think it needs to be, the question needs to be asked, and somebody was found guilty of a felony, would the city council have the ability to expel that counselor?
Yes. So, if someone was found guilty of a felony, they would be able to be expelled.
Okay. And can you just, when you mean abusive conduct, can you expound upon that for me?
It's a very subjective term, which I realize is a very legal answer. It really would be up to the individual. Obviously, if something were to cross a line and go into the territory of something that might be criminal, that would sort of leave our jurisdiction. That's something that, you know, PD would take over, someone could go that route if they wanted to. But let's just say, for sake of argument, it were, it fell below the threshold of what would be criminal, then it would be up to the council, a particular member, to, you know, reference this, reference the code of conduct, and then decide, do they want to put a motion for censure in front of the body? It would be up to the chair, he could take, we had put in here as a potential avenue to go down under the violations, not just a motion for censure, but also the loss of a subcommittee. Because outside of those two things, there really aren't, there really aren't many forms of recourse in this area that we're currently in. So, I think those are the two areas that if someone were to be offended, or if there were abusive conduct, they could entertain those two possibilities.
And basically, censor is basically just something that is documented for people to see?
That's right. That's exactly right.
Okay. I'll yield the floor to Allen.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Scott, do you have any comments or questions?
Actually, I had actually written down the word "subjective" because that was my question, was just about who defines this when we're looking at things like egregious behavior. And so, it's just a majority vote, supermajority, right, of the council, it's eight members. And then it says timely manner, it needs to be filed. What defines a timely manner? Again, is that just a subjective? This is on Rule 39, motion to censure.
Okay. All right.
Filed with the city clerk in a timely manner.
Right. So, that's certainly language that we could, I didn't really know what that language should look like. If there is a certain timeframe that you were to decide is appropriate, or the body could, the rest of the body could decide, I'm happy to put that in there. I don't know if it's...
Was this the language from the MMA? Was this?
No. So, this draft censure came mostly from Haverhill, City of Haverhill. They were the ones that was the most on point. And theirs was, it wasn't pinned down to a timeframe. Ours certainly could, if we wanted it to, and that might be helpful.
But if not, it's still subject to the whole body's decision if that's appropriate or not.
That's exactly right.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from the Counselor Mercier?
So, what is your intention, Mr. Chairman, of this, these rules with respect to the meeting tonight? You're not bringing it forward to the council for support right now, are you?
Which, which is starting the meeting right now, we have more to discuss. Right now, I don't care, it's be up to my colleagues if we're gonna bring this to the council body for, for the support or not. Do you have any opinions on that, Counselor Scott or Dakota?
Well, I have an opinion, I have an opinion on it.
Counselor Mercier and her thoughts.
I have an opinion on it. I just got this two seconds ago. I haven't even had a chance to read it, as I'm sure that my colleagues are gonna come to the city council meeting, they're gonna get this on their desk. I mean, I can read this in like 10 minutes, although maybe the way I read, maybe 25. But the fact is, I haven't digested it to make a, I mean, I don't, I'm not prepared to accept this right now. If you put it on our desk and we can take it home, even if this came in our packet on Friday, that would have been good. I could have looked at it over the weekend, but I'm not gonna support something I saw just five minutes ago. I, I haven't even, Mr. Clerk?
Mr. Clerk, do you have a...
Yeah, I believe the Solicitor said this has to come through with an ordinance form, so there's an opportunity if it gets drafted up by the city, by the city Solicitor's office, come down in the normal course of an ordinance, and that's, that comes down for first reading and there's plenty of time. We put it off for a public hearing and...
Yeah. I would suggest something like that because I don't think tonight we should be able to support it, because I don't think everybody had a chance to digest it. Having said that, 51-3 code of conduct, I know as an elected official that I should kind of be on my guard and try to be nice at all times, but if there's an incident where there's a personal thing going on between a couple, and one of them happens to be a city counselor, I think, as I did at this time, not that I condone any type of behavior of domestic violence or whatever, I did read a pledge that I wouldn't be a part of domestic violence, but the fact is, I don't think in this country where we have rights and rules and that I would wanna act on dismissing someone from the chamber or allowing them not to speak until they had their day in court. I think you're, everybody is innocent till proven guilty. You might be the worst culprit, not you personally, but I think that someone could be the worst culprit, but until they go to court and the court says, "You did something wrong, you're guilty," then that's a different story. But I don't think we as a council have any right to, so was that in here? Because it seems like we should, I don't know...
It seems like, though, it could be brought up to censure.
Yeah.
City Solicitor? I'm sorry.
Mr. Solicitor?
Sure. So, I guess I'll start, there, there is no ability to dismiss anyone from the chamber. That's not a part of this, not on the table, can't be done. But per vote of the body, you could bring forward a motion to censure someone, as was already discussed, which is, you know, basically just a proclamation, a feeling of others that would, again, have to be voted on, that certain behavior fell outside of what this code of conduct puts in front of you. But again, no one can be dismissed, they'll be sitting in that seat, barring being found guilty of a federal crime.
Right.
It just did, I'm sorry, a felony, not a federal crime.
Felony, yeah.
But yeah, you, you can't leave your seat. So, nothing in here would allow anyone on, on the city council to kick another counselor out.
Right, right.
Can't happen.
So, Mr. Gary?
Mr....
I apologize.
Counselor Dakota?
I apologize, Chairman.
Mr. Gary, so this would have to go to a public hearing?
Well, the process is, it gets drafted by the Law Department, Law Department sends it down for a first reading, and then it's referred to a public hearing two weeks later after publication in the local newspaper, and that's acted upon by the council.
Okay. Can you also say, Counselor Dakota?
Yes, thank you. I pardon the interruption.
That's okay. It's a small group of people here, it's a free-flowing conversation, sometime works better. And in response to Counselor Mercier's comment that the first part, anyway, about delaying the presentation of this to the full body, we'll delay till next week because, as you mentioned, we just got this today as well. We give everybody the opportunity to review the recommendations and the report in front of us for a week, and we'll put on the agenda for next week for me to make a presentation and also to get the opinion of other counselors as well.
Sure, that's fine.
Mr. Solicitor?
Thank you. So, I just wanna clarify one thing. So, in terms of, the code of conduct is an ordinance, so that would follow the course of action that Mr. Clerk just described. The filling of the vacancies proposal, that would be in the form of a home rule petition, so that's special legislation. And then lastly, the actual motion for censure, that is going to be in addition to the city council rules. So, they all do have a timeline to them, sort of like an ordinance, but it is three separate processes, not a big deal. I just wanted to clarify.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Solicitor. And we'll, we'll take up the, the process of filling the vacancy in a moment, since we still on the code of conduct. If everybody finished their, Counselor Nguyen in the backseat, do you have any comments, question add? I just have maybe on a lighter comment about the code of conduct. I know that you mentioned a merit of other activities that would require elected officials to pay attention to, so to speak, and one of them is social media communication, and, you know, this being political, how would you define what is appropriate to state by, you've gotta probably say subjective, but I think that is precisely the point, when an elected official may comment, make statement on social media, if somebody were to disagree with that, just on a political standpoint of view, could they somehow make that into like a issue of unbecoming elected official-like? Because if you say something that's not agreeable with the policies, with the politics or personally, it could mean anything to somebody on the other side of the fence, so to speak. How would you define what's appropriate on social media? That's the first part. And the second part, do we have any type of, you know, rules, you know, rules or some kind of understanding, like what can elected officials say or not say on social media?
So, that's, it would be very difficult, I think, to define not only what someone's saying on social media, but again, how someone would interpret that. So, I, I think to define that would be, you know, borderline impossible. However, I think, yes, theoretically, in, in a system set up like this, one counselor could bring forward, under this, a motion for censure based off of something that was on social media. If it rose to a certain level, I don't know, but yes, that would be a possibility here. However, it does require the eight votes, the two-thirds vote, so I think the reason why that is a little bit higher is for situations like that, to give the other counselors the ability to say, "No, no, no, you know, okay, that might offend you, but it certainly doesn't offend the rest of us, or we don't think it rises to that level." So, it's almost like a, sort of a built-in failsafe, but in terms of social media, I think it would be very difficult to define what would, what sort of, I guess, comments or what someone says to fall within these parameters. I think that would be difficult.
Thank you, Mr. Solicitor. Counselor Dakota?
Being subject to something, it's so large that if I upset someone on the council and they take it the wrong way, are we gonna have a free-flowing, "I wanna censor this city counselor" before, because of the comments that they made, or, I mean, where is this? I'm trying to restrict it maybe a little bit because I'm, I'm still reading as Counselor Mercy, I, I got this about an hour and a half ago, like I said, so, and I'm reading all these and a lot of them kind of meld together a little bit here. I just don't know where we're going with censor.
Sure.
I'm sure, I apologize if I didn't frame that correctly.
That's okay.
City Solicitor, but it's, I don't know.
I, I understand your point, and I think, in my opinion, I would like to think that it wouldn't turn into something like that with, you know, counselors filing motions of censure against one another. I mean, I, that hasn't been my experience here, I wouldn't see that being the case. To your point, is it possible? Yes. But I think where it does require the two-thirds vote, it gives an ability to, I guess, perhaps cooler heads could prevail in certain situations, and even if it got brought forward, there's, there's a chance that it could stop right there.
And once again, what you had brought up is that the person who filed that censure would speak.
Yep.
Then the person who's defending that would then speak, and then the other members would then be able to speak upon the, the censure, I guess.
Yes, that's right.
And that's the way it would go.
That's the way it would work. You get, whoever files it, they get the first opportunity to speak, and then the individual counselor who was the subject of that censure would then have the ability to speak, and then it would be opened up to the rest of the floor to speak before a roll call vote took place.
Okay. I thank you for that.
Counselor Scott?
I was actually just gonna make a similar comment, that the safeguard is that eight out of 10 of your peers have to agree that you did something worthy of censure. So, that alone is, is a really large majority, and you do get to speak and defend yourself, and, I mean, it's all of those things. So, I mean, eight out of 10 is pretty significant, so, thank you.
Any other comments or questions on the code of conduct section of this meeting from any of the counselors?
Motion for public hearing.
Okay. Motion by Counselor Dakota, second by Counselor Scott on favor of the aye.
Aye.
Motion's passed. We now go to the...
Mr. Counsel Chow, was that motion? I didn't catch it.
Motion to send to public hearing?
No, to send to the attorney's.
All right. It should, it should go up to the Law Department first to draft the ordinance.
Law Department, okay.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The second part is talking about how to fill the vacancy position, and we had a lengthy discussion at the last meeting about, you know, what to do when somebody were to vacate a position the first 12 months, the second 12 months, and again, Mr. Solicitor, thank you for outlining it for, for us, and it's in the written report. Before we have a discussion on it, I'm gonna ask the Solicitor again to briefly summarize what's in the report so the people out there watching us on TV could, could follow.
Thank you. So, as you mentioned, we, at the last subcommittee meeting, we took all of the information, all the discussion, all the suggestions, we tried to combine it into this one proposal. There's a lot of different pieces here that I think covers just about everything we spoke about. We used other processes that are used in Worcester and Chelsea, and then we kind of just combined a few others as well to try and satisfy some of the things that were brought up. And I guess it's sort of long, but I'll, I'll try to summarize briefly. So, if there is, and as I mentioned, this will be a home rule petition, so this will come in the form of special legislation because, and we spoke about this at the last subcommittee meeting, statutorily, the city is governed by how we fill these, we fill these vacancies. So, if someone runs unopposed, then it is actually the city council who appoints someone to step into their place if they have to step down or they leave office. If someone runs against an opponent, or multiple opponents, if whoever's elected, they have to step down, then the next highest vote getter is the one who goes in behind them. So, in this proposal, if we sort of broke up the term into the first 12 months and the second 12 months, so, if you had, whether someone runs unopposed or, you know, with an opponent, if there, someone has to step down and there's an opening to fill that vacancy, that there would have to be a special election. So, I, I think that was what I heard last time, is what everyone was, felt was the most democratic process, so we put that in there. If a vacancy occurs in the second 12 months, then there are basically three categories, three options that would come in the form of a majority vote by city council. They can either, A, use a special election, they can appoint an eligible voter to fill that vacancy, or the third option is that they could leave the seat vacant. And, so again, we, just in terms of, I, I don't wanna say logically, because that's probably the wrong word to use, but in the first 12 months, the idea is that there's still enough time left in that term that, you know, whether it's resources or the amount of time that'll go into a special election, I think everyone would agree is worth it. Whereas in the second 12 months, having city council giving them the option, because you could be in January of the second term, and, all right, maybe a, a special election still makes sense, but all of a sudden, it could be August, September, October, then maybe a special election doesn't make sense, the term's coming to an end, lot of time, lot of resources, it might not be worth it. So, in that scenario, city council has three choices that they can basically choose from to fill, to fill that seat. And then this would apply to the city council and the school committee as well.
Thank you, Mr. Solicitor. Good options, and I, I know my colleagues are gonna have a lot of comments and questions, especially on the, the second 12 months, and you have given three options, as, as you mentioned. My only comment or question would be, Mr. Solicitor, these options, whether it's district council or at large, it seems like there's no option if somebody, or whether the person has an opponent or not, it seems like there's no option if somebody were to have this like second or third place in the race. So, there's not really a discussion in your report about that second person would automatically fill the vacant position? Is, is that correct?
That, that's correct. I mean, that's sort of how it's done now, at least, if someone runs with an opponent. We could add that language in to mirror what's already, you know, the rules statutorily, we could certainly put that in here. Again, that would be at the will of all of you, and then ultimately, the will of the body. It, that wasn't what I had gathered the last time that we did talk about this, but we certainly could add that if that were, if that's the desire, it's no problem.
Okay. Now, I just want to have clarity on that. Counselor Dakota?
If my memory serves me correctly, and when we had spoken about this, this is probably, what, four meetings ago, I would think, that we were going to ask the legislature to bring this forward again, and that the city manager was gonna do so, did that happen or not?
So, I think what the plan was, was we already had legislation that is, it's currently in there, but it was not...
From a year ago.
From several years ago.
Okay.
And the, the intent behind that is not what the intent is now. Basically, it's different, very different, and I don't think it's at all what anyone wants, the language that's there, so, and I don't know if the administration, if we've been able to actually reach out to the delegation and have them pull that back. So, the idea was to pull that back, we wanna eliminate it, and then we're gonna move forward with this new home rule petition, with this new special legislation that's...
We're starting anew?
Yes, exactly.
Basically. So, if, getting back to Chairman Chow's point here, if Counselor Dakota said, "I don't wanna do this anymore as of today," would my challenger fill my, my role for the remaining term?
Yes, he would.
Okay. Until we...
Until, until this is, once this special legislation goes forward, not until it's passed. Once it's enacted, then it changes, but until then, the current rules apply.
And I think I asked you during the last meeting, why there was no action taken two years ago, we didn't get a reason why, and, and how, how do we, promising that does it, it is to go through this again and be stalemate again? It seems like, what, I guess, what stopped the process?
I, I couldn't speak to that. I don't know what stopped it the first time around. In terms of this second time around, we could try and be more proactive. It seems like a lot of, not, it seems like, I know a lot of time and effort has gone into this process that's before us here, so perhaps that'll be more motivation to really push this forward, make phone calls, follow up, things that probably didn't happen before. We can certainly make sure that happens this time.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Dakota. Before, I, I just wanna make a quick comment here before, call on Counselor Scott. To continue Counselor Dakota's thought process, and I think I might have missed it, I don't know if you answered it, but Counselor Dakota asked the administration to send a letter to the delegation to file new legislation, the home rule petition, and it has not been done yet, is that correct?
Right. So, this hasn't been approved, this actual home rule petition that's before us, so we can't send this forward until it's approved by the body. So, once, if this gets referred to, to the body, you know, this home rule petition right here, once it's approved, then that letter, and this will go forward to the delegation, when I assume simultaneously will say, "Look, we wanna pull back the old bill that's before you, that's no longer our desire, and this is the one that we wanna push forward." So, I think it'll simultaneously be a forward and back.
Okay. So, this, this was gonna, that was gonna be my follow-up question. So, now we need, that the process, we need to put in a, a motion if the body approves it, and then the managers of the administration can forward that communication.
That's right.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Clerk?
Just one other thing procedurally from, from sitting here is, is usually these home rule petitions come back in the form of a vote, so it would be after a vote be established by the, by the Law Department as well. These come down in the form of a vote, that vote is acted on, I take that action of the vote, I wrap it all up and we send it out to the legislature, but it has to be in the form of a vote.
Does it have to go through the public hearing as well?
No.
It does not?
No.
Okay. All right.
So, for the nice purpose, we need to submit a, a motion, put forward a motion to refer the Law Department?
You could refer from this body directly.
Okay.
Motion, motion to send it to the Law Department.
I have a few comments first.
Oh, I apologize.
Okay. Go ahead, Counselor Scott.
Thank you. I just have a few questions. So, I remember at the last meeting, we actually had asked you to bring forward, we talked about Chelsea and a few other cities and towns and how they did it. Just to follow up on what Counselor Dakota said, as far as the next in line in a district race taking over, is that really under Plan E? I, I mean, that isn't even really defined under our Plan E, right, who, in a district race, because the district race is not part of the Plan E, is my understanding.
Right. It's statutory.
Okay.
So, it's, it's not, not under the Plan E statute, it comes under chapter 230 of the Acts of 1954.
That's next in line.
Of course. Who doesn't know that, right?
Right. That's a session-type thing.
That's right.
Okay. So, even if it's a district race where there's only two people running, they still succeed. So, and my concern with that was, again, we, we had a race, and, and, you know, I won't, I'll just pick one of the races kind of random, I think one of them was like 85% to 15%. So, I definitely don't think that was really a, you know, a, a voice of the voters in support of the other candidate, and that's why I think there should be a special election. of the other candidate, and that's why I think there should be a special election. I mean, so I do support that. I don't know if that's the same case with the at-large elections. That was the only area that I'm not sure we completely talked about last time. At-large, there are, you know, many people can run, you know, it's not just one-on-one like a preliminary would be in a district. And then my only other concern on this one is the vacant seat, I don't know if it should be limited maybe to like the last six months. I think leaving a seat, you know, in a district without representation really isn't a fair thing to do. So, that would be my only comments on it.
I think on the, the last six, I think the second 12 months, it's, it's based on the counselor's vote, we can decide what to do.
Yep.
Whether to have a special election, to have an appointment, or to have a vacate, right, so that'd be up, up to the, up to the body. Before I continue, I'd like to acknowledge Counselor Paul Yem, just joined us in the chamber as well. Any other, anyone else has comments or questions? Right, there's a motion by Counselor Dakota to refer to the Law Department to start the process of the home rule petition, second by Counselor Scott on favor of the eye, motion is carried. Any other comments or questions by my colleagues in the subcommittee or anybody in the chamber? Motion to adjourn by Counselor Dakota, second by Counselor Scott, motion is passed. Thank you, everyone, for joining us in the meeting tonight. Have a good night.